Okay, councillors, I'm going to open the meeting, special meeting at 12:15pm. Thank you for your attendance. We might look at...
Do you have to tell people they're online?
We also, yeah, we have councillor Burkitt on the online, councillor Guthrie and also councillor O'Neill. Okay, so do we, probably should go through conflicts. So we've got conflicts, we might do them first. Councillor Edwards, did you want to do yours?
Yep. I think I've only got one.
I think it's up on the screen there.
There's no others there, I don't know.
Well, you may want one on the...
Yeah, just have a quick look.
Well, could you go to mine?
C1, was it?
Yeah.
I think I got a conflict too with that, Kelly.
Mark, it's 3.2 and C1.
And C1.
Both, the both.
Same one.
Same, same.
You got, you got that, Kel? Got both?
Yep, okay. Okay, we'll just wait to get it up on the screen and then we should be right. Okay, councillor Edwards? Oh, we got...
Item 13 point, whatever it is, 3.2, sorry.
3.2. And C2 and C1.
I have an interest in item 3.2. Description is proposed service station at 129/131 McDowell Street, Roma Lot 2, on RP 60707. Can all the other councillors hear me? Sorry, not in the room, but the other ones. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, mate.
Okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Declaring councillor councillor Mark Edwards. Person with interest, related party, close associate, other relationship, myself. Particulars of interest. I have a professional relationship with one of the submitters, whose name I can't reveal for professional reasons. Type of conflict is declarable conflict of interest. And the action is I'll leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Okay, so...
And I've got C1 as well, so...
Yeah, and C1 you've declared, or one of them you'd declared before, haven't you, I think, so? So C1 is a new one.
Oh, is it? Righto. The other one I declared before, yeah, righto. Okay, item, I have an interest in item C1. Description is traffic impacts associated with proposed development. Declaring councillor councillor Mark Edwards. Person with the interest is myself. Particulars of the interest, I have a professional relationship with one of the submitters, whose name I can't reveal for professional reasons. Type of conflict, declarable conflict of interest. And action is leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Okay, any other conflicts there? What will we have next, Kel?
I've got to find the other conflicts, I've prepared yours.
So the first one, I'm happy to do the first one, which is 3.2 proposed service station at 129 to 131 McDowell Street. I've declared a conflict on that, so I'll just be noting that I'll be leaving the room while this is being dealt with, discussed and dealt with. But I do need to declare one on C1 as it looks that I would probably have the same conflict, so if you do have that one... Okay. So it's probably very similar to my last declaration on the... Oh, yeah, that's it. So C1, traffic impacts associated with proposed development, 2021/20326. C1, I'd like to declare an interest. The declaring councillor is myself, Tyson Golda. Person with the interest, related party, close associate or other relationship is my mother Carmen Golda. Particulars of the interest, my mother has a property across the road from the location referred to possibly connected to this. And the type of conflict is a declarable conflict of interest. And the action I will be dealing with is I'll leave the room while the matter is discussed and voted on. Okay, do we have any other conflicts? Councillor Ladbrokes. So if it's on the service station, you would have declared it before, I would imagine, but you might want to note it, but then there's the C1, which is a new one.
Did you declare it before?
Yeah, I did.
Why, why are you declaring?
Just being in the CBD, I did it last time.
Okay.
So...
Seems a long way away, okay.
Yeah, it does, anyway. The item number is 3.1. The description is that... What are we doing, 3.2?
So you've declared that one, as far as I understand, so you just need to note that you've got an interest and you'll be leaving the room.
Just note that I have declared a conflict with 3.2 at a previous meeting.
C1, do they?
And C1. A conflict with C1. Have a conflict with item number, item number C1. The description, traffic impacts associated with the proposed development. I, I'm George Ladbrokes, the declaring councillor, the person of interest in related party is myself. Particulars of interest, I have a business located in the Roma CBD, Ladbrokes Woodtree. Type, the type of conflict is a declarable conflict of interest. And the action I'll take is leave the room while the matter is being discussed and voted on.
Okay, any other conflicts, councillors? Just in relation to C2, employee code of conduct. Does any councillors wish to discuss this in close? Oh.
But if there's any discussions, if there's not, did you need to discuss it?
Mr Mayor, can I move, we change the order of the agenda? If we could, C2 first. 3.1 second, sorry, am I going too fast here, Kel? And 4.1 third. C1, sorry, fourth. And 3.2 fifth. I don't think I've missed any of them.
No, that's right.
Second that. Any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
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 Okay, 9-0. So do we have someone to go into close? Councillor McMullin.
May I move that? In accordance with the provisions of section 254j 3 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, a local government may resolve to close a meeting to the public to discuss confidential items that its councillors or members consider necessary to close the meeting. In accordance with section 254j 5 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, the following table provides the matters to be discussed and overview of what is to be discussed while the meeting is closed. Agenda items, C1, traffic impacts associated with proposed development.
Sorry, we might, sorry councillor McMullin, will we just go in for C2 first? And then we'll do the rest in the next resolution, I think.
The C2.
Okay, we have a second up? I'll second that. Any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? We'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
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 9-0. Okay, so we're going to do...
Mr Mayor.
Mr Mayor. I didn't declare a conflict in that last item, that 3.2.
Oh, you didn't? Righto, do you want to do that now?
Yep.
Righto.
The item number is 3.2. The description of proposed service station at 129 to 131 McDowell Street, Roma Lot 2, on RP 60707. And the declaring councillor is myself, councillor Ladbrokes. The person with the interest and the related party is myself. And particulars of interest, I have a business located in the Roma CBD. And the type of conflict would be a declarable conflict of interest. And the action I'll take, I'll leave the room while the matter is being discussed and voted on.
Righto, okay. So we actually said we were going to do as per the deputy mayor's motion, I think it was...
C2.
C2.
3.1 and 4.1.
Aren't we going to just adopt, can we just, aren't we going to deal with one, we just come out close?
Yeah, well, this was... Yeah, we're just going through the...
C2s first.
C2. We're going via the motion of, that got up, to change the order. So as far as I understand, it's C2, employee code of conduct. Do we have a mover? Councillor McMullin.
Mr Mayor, I'll move. Councillor foreshadow a notice of repeal for resolution number 0M-09.2021-93 and foreshadow the second draft of the new replacement employee code of conduct as presented for release to the broader workforce for consultation and refinement with the framework aligned with the work done at a state government level, adopted to a local government environment, subject to approval of the relevant Queensland government representative.
Councillor McMullin, do you mind if we take off the subject two now, because we received that this morning?
Oh, okay, yeah.
It was after the...
Yeah, okay.
And it was adapted, not adopted. Are you happy with that? Yeah. Councillor, are you happy if we release that internally in the interim? Pending the notice of repeal?
I don't have a problem. You mean out to the workforce, so, yeah.
Yeah, and to the ECC, just so they know where we're going.
So deputy mayor, like, was adapted? You're happy to say adapted rather than adopted, is that correct?
Did I say adopted?
No, adapted is, yeah, is what we're hoping for.
Yeah. So you're happy with adapted?
Did I read adapted?
No, no.
Oh, sorry, adapted. To a local government environment.
Righto. Okay, so we're happy with that as it's on the screen.
If you need anything in there for the...
Does the councillors that are online, do they understand what the motion is?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Councillor O'Neill?
Yes, I can see the screen.
Righto.
Yeah, and so we'll send that out this afternoon to ECC and to the leadership team and employees just to get them thinking and just be aware of where we're heading, is that okay?
Yep.
Yep.
So do we have a second up? Councillor Edwards, any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak? We're going to go to the vote. All those in favour?
Yes.
Yes.
All those against?
Against.
7-2, if I can call for a division. Okay, moving on to 4.1, page 92.
3.1, wasn't it?
3.1 and then 4.1.
4.1 was the next one, was it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. 3.1, council submission to Commonwealth Government Regional Telecommunications Review. Do we have a mover? Councillor Hancock?
I move that council authorises its chief executive officer or delegate to lodge the attached submission to the Commonwealth Government in response to its telecommunications issues paper of July 2021.
Do we have a second up?
I'll second it, but can, oh, sorry, did you want to... But were we going to hear from manager Ed on this?
Yeah, you can if you want to...
Anything to say?
Nothing, through you, Mr Mayor.
No.
No, I made some, I made the changes in the document, I circulate to, highlighted in yellow. And those changes were based on the feedback I had from the last council briefing. I have had a consultation with community, a couple of community members as well about this and confirmed that we're on the right track, yeah.
Okay. That's good, yep.
Okay, so councillor Ladbrokes was actually...
That community member was the regional president of Agforce, here locally, he's...
Who was that?
A Ken Sign.
Oh, yeah, yep.
So had a, and he's at the Dunkeld Community, so... Lots of, working with telcos, he's very au fait about this sort of thing and agrees with our submission.
No, that's good, thanks.
Okay, it was actually councillor Ladbrokes was first with seconding, or moving, no, seconding. Any opposition? Does anyone wish to speak to it? Well, we're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
Yes.
9-0. Okay, we're moving on to page 92. Item 4.1, Queensland Remembers Grant Programme. I would like to move that a report be prepared for an upcoming council meeting to add to the Roma Senatath a low wall which enables the acknowledgement, actually I'll put wall or walls, which enables the acknowledgement of servicemen and women for other conflicts and services after the Second World War in consultation with the Roma RSL sub-branch. And two, any additional eligible projects be further investigated as part of this report. We have a second up, councillor Edwards? We have a question, councillor Hancock?
Yeah, I do, thanks, Mr Mayor. Is this been a request from the Roma RSL? Is that how it's come to the table?
No, it hasn't, it's something that I'm bringing up. It certainly has in the past from the RSL. In fact, RSL had a grant and we had community feedback from members of the community that says a Senatath is only up to World War II. So it's well and truly been brought up before. This grant had came in and I think a low wall or two low walls that could be fitted in there means that we know how, we now have even Afghanistan conflict has concluded and we don't have anything since the Second World War, as far as I understand. So, yeah, so it definitely has history and it's something that's been certainly even brought up from veterans that come here and only have the two sort of major conflicts in there. So the, yeah.
And my second question is, can council apply for more than one project under the grant?
Well, I'm hoping we get that back in the report, but we're on a time limit, that's why it was...
October, yeah.
Yeah, so basically this would enable staff to go and consult with RSL, find out what they wish. And then obviously point two is about other projects. And the question is, I think it's a maximum of 50,000, so it's not going to go a long way in seems to be what construction costs these days, so... Councillor Taylor?
Just a really quick question. So the report is just the fact that to ask the RSL if they want a wall, is that the question?
Well, I would, I would be hoping the, what I'm hoping is we give in principle support, and maybe I need to say that, that we would like to do this, but we talk to the RSL in case they go, oh, no, we don't want to do it, or they've got another plan or something. So RSL's got to be crucial, coming back to council and hearing their views. But we're putting up, if we support this, it'll be putting up that we're looking for a low wall. It might be very high, but it would be just something that fits in with the Senatath that actually means we can have those conflicts recognised around that. And it was suggested as part of that grant, so then, but there'll be no decisions made. It will come back to council to approve it, if we're going to put it in.
Mr Mayor, just with what you said, I just had a thought, and I wonder whether we shouldn't limit ourselves to a wall, because maybe there are some other ideas out there that might fit into that area better, that might not be a wall. It might just be a remembrance feature, because it could be something in the gardens or, you know, plaques, plaques around the garden. It could be something else that we might not have thought about. I just wonder if we don't limit it to wall, because it could actually be wall, but it could be something else as well that the RSL had thought about that we don't know about, so I just wondered if we...
So I'm happy to have a low wall or walls, or... Yeah, or...
Or remembrance.
No, just something to do with, or other suggestion or something.
Mr Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Mr Mayor, yeah, just to follow on from councillor Hancock. I also would like to see, like, certain situations, like, if we look at expanding this to all other towns with RSLs as well, and it mightn't happen in this round, but it's something that probably should be looked at across the region. And similar to what councillor Hancock was saying, certain areas have got different layouts for their ANZAC area. So like, in Mitchell for argument's sake, there's a long wall as you walk through either side, which could house future plaques or listings of names, et cetera. A lot different to other places, but I think we should open it up to all RSLs in our council area, I reckon.
Yeah, it might be, just depending on the funding, it might only, I might have to do it in stages or something, but yeah, I'm happy.
Yeah, just for consultation, I mean, and then we might have to apply for funding or they might be willing to access, RSL are pretty good at sourcing funding, so that might be just, just open up communication with each area.
Yeah, yeah, no, so, so I'll read it again, because I've changed it and see if the second is happy. A report be prepared for an upcoming council meeting to add the Roma Senatath, to add to the Roma Senatath a low wall or walls or other suggestion which enables the acknowledgement of servicemen and women for other conflicts and services after the Second World War in consultation with the Roma RSL sub-branch. And two, any additional eligible projects across the region be further investigated as part of this report. And all we might put on there, this report or future reports, just in case it's, you know, we might have to do it each year or something. Was the second happy with that?
Yes, yep.
So just a little bit of feedback too for the councillors that weren't here from last term is part of that grant they were going for is this low wall was in the grant. So that's where it's not my idea, it was actually what other people have suggested. But, you know, they could change or they might want something different. Councillor Ladbrokes?
Yeah, just be really aware of the timeframe, because it's less than a month.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
You know, for that money, because it's...
That's why, yeah, we're here today.
It's forwards, it just takes too long and it's finished.
Yeah, I think
It's less than a month.
George Mehays, I think he's the grants officer at RSL, so I think he would, and obviously you'd have to take it to an RSL meeting, but I'd imagine this gets the ball rolling and we know we've got to get it in in a month.
There you go, there's the personnel that are, like, very often referred to as service personnel, is that...
Yeah, do you want to change that to that?
I think that sort of covers...
Righto, that'll do. I'm happy with that.
The two Ns.
Okay, so everyone understands, we've changed that word, we know what we're talking about. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? Certainly do, I do think that we've got a deficiency where we don't recognise the service of all of the conflicts. And from my talking to veterans, it's a very disturbing service for most people that are affected sometimes for their whole life. And anything we can do to try and, you know, say thank you for their service in some way, I think we should be doing. Does anyone else wish to speak for or against the motion? Then we're going to go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
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 9-0. Okay, then we move on to items that I have a conflict with, so I will be leaving the meeting and ask for the deputy mayor to take over.
Obviously councillor Edwards and councillor Ladbrokes will be leaving as well.
Don't worry about us, we're right. Looking fairly well.
Right out.
I just hope the technology doesn't fail, because we might have a corem.
Well, that's true.
Definitely social distancing.
Definitely looking good on the camera. In this example, no cheating in this example.
Okay, the mayor, I'm going to wait for the butcher.
Do you feel crated by comparison?
The mayor, councillor Ladbrokes and councillor Edwards have left the room with conflicts, so we have... Can I have someone move? We're going to close to discuss C1, traffic impacts associated with proposed development, 2021-20326. Councillor Hancock?
I move that in accordance with the provisions of section 254j 3, the Local Government Regulation 2012, that council resolved to close the meeting to the public at 113pm to discuss confidential items, C1. Which is, councillors consider it necessary to close the meeting. In accordance with section 254j 5 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, the following table provides the matters to be discussed and an overview of what is to be discussed while the meeting is closed. The agenda item is C1, traffic impacts associated with proposed development.
Do we have a second up, please? Councillor Taylor? Any opposition to the motion? Anyone wish to speak? All those in favour?
Yes.
Councillor Guthrie?
She hasn't.
She hasn't.
Yes.
Thank you, six, six zero. Okay. Agenda item C point one, traffic impacts associated with proposed development two oh two one dash two oh three two six. Councillor Hancock's a mover?
I move that council receive and note the officer's report as presented.
Have a seconder please. Councillor Taylor? Any opposition, anyone wish to speak? I'll go to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
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 Six zero. Thank you. Agenda item three point two, propose proposed service station at one twenty nine, one thirty one McDowell Street, Roma lot two on RP six oh seven oh seven. I would like to move where do I start? That council refuses the development application for a material change of use for a service station and operational works for advertising signage at one twenty nine to one thirty one McDowell Street Roma lot two on RP six oh seven oh seven pursuant to section sixty of the Planning Act two thousand and sixteen for the following reasons. One, it has not, it has not been demonstrated that the proposed development will comply with PO two nine of the principal centre zone code. The proposed accesses and internal layout will adversely impact the local road network and pose a risk to the safety of motorists. Two, it has not been demonstrated it has not been demonstrated the proposed development will comply with PO three O of the principal centre zone code in particular A. The proposed development does not provide sufficient onsite car parking spaces in accordance with schedule nine of the Marinua Regional Council Planning Scheme. And B, the provisions for service vehicles is inadequate. C, the proposed development will result in a loss of on-street car parking spaces frequently utilized by customers of businesses in the vicinity. D, there is no demonstrated planning or community need for the proposed development. And E, there are no other matters that would warrant the approval of the proposed development given its, its non-compliance with relevant assessment benchmarks and the relevant matters contained in points A and B. That's it Kel, okay, do I have a seconder please? Councillor Taylor, is there any opposition to the motion, anyone wish to speak? Can I put it to the vote, all those in favour?
Yes.
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 Six zero, thank you. Is there any further business or anything, anyone would like to talk and so I'll declare the meeting opened at.
Closed, closed.
Sorry, at what's it, one fifty five, does that sound right on there? At one fifty five, thanks everyone for their attendance.